Hi, if someone called and went to open the door. Can I have your call roll please?
Amy Burris, present. J.R. Hildston. Deborah Johnson, here. Bill Lugetz.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Kate Mintera, here. Frank Willey.
Present.
And then Barbara, here.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Before we get into the part of the agenda, I think this is a good time I have to read a statement for everybody. This Saturday, September 11th, is the 20th anniversary of the terrorist attack on the World Trade Center. The attacks are the deadliest terror attacks in world history, causing the deaths of 2,996 people, injuring more than 6,000 others. The death toll included 265 only four planes, 2,606 in the World Trade Center and in the surrounding area, and 125 in the Pentagon. Most who died were civilians, the rest included 340 firefighters, 72 law enforcement officers, and 55 military personnel. More than 90 countries lost since the attacks. Since the start of the US military operations through April of this year, 2,448 American service members have been killed in Afghanistan. Additional 3,846 US contractors also lost their lives. According to the US Department of Defense casualty status report, one of the 20,000 soldiers were wounded from the combat, many of whom now live with permanent disabilities. Within the last several weeks, another 13 American soldiers lost their lives supporting the evacuation of Americans from Afghanistan. American citizens are still trying to get out from Afghanistan. Let's take a few all-star all brave Americans that have made the ultimate sacrifice to protect and serve their fellow Americans. And on Saturday, I ask that you take some time to remember the deadliest terror attack in world history, in a manner he find most appropriate. Before we get into the adoption of the agenda, remind everybody about the question, if you have any conflicts taking on the side of the council before you vote. We do have one council member that has filled in in the past, whenever that happened, very anxious about the agenda being done by roll call. With the changes to South Dakota California law, there are going to be some delay. There is a section here that talks about teleconference meetings. Meetings including executive sessions may be conducted by teleconference. Members are deemed present if they answer present to the roll call taken by teleconference. Any voted and meaning called by teleconference may be taken by voice vote. If any members can't sit in the mayor, the vote shall proceed to a roll call form. So, a member that's present or absent tonight is J.R. Hildston, and he did respond as present. So we can go through these agenda items as we typically would, unless somebody answers in a negative, then we need to do a roll call form. Now, the motion to approve and amend the agenda. The first change will read to the current claims. And that's because I'm asking to read on page 13 of your own current claims. There's a bill to pirate landscape for $4,900. Pirate landscape among folks that are doing the work well for it by North River Street. The work isn't as far along as I hoped it would be at this point. I had some other issues with the work that's been done there. So I would like to withhold that $4,900 until we can sit down with pirates and get some decisions resolved. Now, the change to the bills into the current claims. So removing that $4,900 bill, which would take the current claims from $206,916.57 We've got the first amendment to current claims for a new amount of $202,016.57. The second amendment is to personnel. As to that employee, Zimga Holloway, a full-time employee, given sponge mineral springs, aquatics wellness director, salary of $15.35 per hour effective September 9th, 2021. Should become personal action fee, and the rest of that is a top stop health care account for a bit of business. Anybody have any questions?
What would you say your name of the owner?
The employee, Zimga Holloway. Full-time, given sponge mineral springs and aquatics wellness director. $15.35 per hour effective September 8th, 2021. Any questions? The motion to approve and amend the agenda.
The motion to approve and amend the agenda. Changes of current claims, each to pirate with $4,900, we will hold that there at this time. Changing the total to $202,016.57. Second change under personnel. We will put as A, the place Zimga Holloway, a new aquatics wellness director, full-time, at $15.35 per hour starting September 9th of 21.
September 8th.
September 8th.
Discussion. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passes. The motion to approve the bills from the August 16th council meeting. Make your vote.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 16th council meeting.
Sir. Discussion. All in favor?
I oppose.
I abstain. Motion passes. The motion to approve the bills in between.
I have motion to approve the bills in between at $275,500.57.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims. Make a motion to approve current claims for $202,016.57. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims for $7,995.57.
Discussion. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passes. Bring us to communications from the public. Sarah Close, are you with us? Come on down. So they state your name and address for the record. Why not send one of our couple closest personal on the front line? Well? Audience, can you hear?
Yeah. I was so close. Okay. I'm really just finding you guys as you're improving or celebration. Like if it is a subset or like the... Thank you so much. One back in the other way. Is that no passing? Working on the budget for the next year. You know, Google for the so other part means time. Yes, car show is somewhere. But it's not right. So I thought it was hot springs, but... Um, what date and time frame did you have it at?
Around 5:17.
Have you kind of looked at all the other events going on around the hills or close by of all this February 8th or 20th event? Do you think about like friends or... Festival in the park?
Just the one other thing?
We're hoping for like Thursday through Sunday. The original events had a while when we had horse racing and drive-in contests and free, you know, a couple of ice machines do anymore. But it would like to happen a while over the weekend. Like the Hyrum Museum to be involved to come up with a really rich set of events.
That's wonderful. My friend, he's right. Like doing this all on your own displays, why don't you just work your way?
I have a pretty good sense. I really have a question about.
As far as the parks go, if you live far enough in advance, how we feel to keep a name or a date for them? You have any questions for us?
Yes.
Well, I think it's a good idea. Check on minor dates so far.
No, I'm happy with one year.
So depending on what you're looking at for approval, to Craig's point, if you're looking to actually reserve creative space in Sentinel Park, as soon as you can do that, January 1st of the year that you want to hold that, so that's a best. That if you're looking to reserve a particular spot, and you're looking to use electricity, those types of trends, that's a request that you can put in front of the council to waive those fees, and they're asking them to do that. And then they'll just have to decide, you know, what's the request to put in whether they're going to do that. Can't tell you in the past that there have been others that asked to have those fees waived, and the council has not waived those fees. That's not to suggest that they won't. Request that you put in front of that. And as soon as you know when the dates are, when you want to reserve it, ladies and see all the help in that process. Just the papers, which... Which one do you like to reserve, if you want whole park or just want south end of it, north end of it? And then we can still issue. Don't forget we're here to help you. We want to listen to your questions. And as Dave talked about the committees, because we're talking about the parks, parks decoration, probably an excellent to start with. So I have to say about the areas, the current share of the parks and recreation. Maybe once a lot, the first one's in everyone. When is the first one?
Do you have a question?
We did retain the role. I'm still meeting the dogs tonight. We'll change it back at 1:00. Go on down. Just saying.
Thank you for putting the efforts and... It's wonderful.
Do I ask you any questions? How did you get interested in this? How kind of this summer?
Um, I just wanted to make a question, yes, on the Latin system of the Black Hills. Opened up lots of things, it's huge spread of water supply. And so I was wondering whether you could come and sell yourself for this. That's like three years ago.
Thank you. Sarah, before you go, as everyone else has said, I'm excited about seeing some other groups that want to make these things happen. Coming off of the Blue Festival last weekend, the town was just visit, visit, visit Sentinel Park in particular was destroyed as a... And activities just continued throughout the day. However, we did ask friends back to having those types of activities during the weekend. That's good. Thank you for that. Thank you for getting in front of council. Any other committees that you're calling on that?
Well, I can show you that. I guess the park and I are going to the area where they're having a experience. Sure, the volunteer part of this margin there, other volunteer. I even heard that she possibly is able to manage that process in that, for dating with consequences, the people who are working in this area. Even though she possibly is able to manage it, it truly was a drastic setup. So I want to share with you all some of the highlights of that two-year period. Over that period, which was just before the wedding festival, students, community volunteers, number of 20, worked in total of approximately 140 to 100 hours in the city. While there were many negative discussions on social media, it was frustrating to all of us. Members of this group took the Hyrum, we fulfilled the positivity and we gratified our accomplishments. Our volunteers were individuals, groups of friends and parents, opposed to all ages and physical abilities, including one volunteer who was in mobility chair. Most of the volunteers stayed between four and 12 hours of their time, but one of our amazing volunteers logged 35 hours. Two businesses, Lundry and Bison, and Chukas and Murray jumped in to offer volunteers the local interest. Nice Hardler was a good site for our trash bags and supplies. Community members laughed and waved and shouted their appreciation and encouragement as they drove by. People out walking their dogs would bring a bottle of water or stuff to visit. Visitors to our community were gobsmacked when they found out the scope of our work. My reason for standing before you tonight is that we don't want our beautiful city to fall into such a state of disrepair ever again. However, managing this effort is well outside the scope of Key Hospital's beautiful or any other volunteer organization. So what's the look ahead? Though we have a group of solid volunteers who are willing to step out behind us for the supplies and work. We all want to continue to contribute, but we can't do this alone. We need positive collaboration with the city, with business, and property owners. With the exception of the work on the pods, which belong to Key Hospital's beautiful, the work that we did was a responsibility of the city and of the business and property owners. There needs to be a process by which volunteers can be used to fill in the gaps, but without giving businesses and property owners and the city a path to their responsibilities. Some of the business owners we spoke to said that they were not even aware that they had such responsibility. After this, we did know there were clearly no consequences for ignoring that responsibility. Lastly, I'll just mention that I find it interesting that we were never acknowledged or thanked by the city, though one councilwoman did, from her own personal Facebook page, offers positive remarks. I'm not here to beg for your thanks and letters, only to point out that we didn't deserve it. I would submit that you had a tremendous opportunity to engage with the community in a great positive way, and you missed it. I will close with this. Residency is defined as the capacity for personal growth, for recalibration, and for principle reorganization in face of new circumstances. We are a resilient community that's proud of what you think this is for.
I talked from here, please step forward. Notes. I need to make one thing or two. I haven't seen the dark. I don't know how to... The city actually provides a whole of it. We also use it if we have to. So we supplies to them. We were just about ourselves.
It was a quickly put together effort. People from different organizations and different individuals were all like, guys, I need it, and it just kind of swelled. And it just happened. And it was not the best organized sort of concept out there to say, hey, we don't... I had to, Kristin Helm person, I want to do it. And it was me. And I just think, wow, you have these people's attention. Just show them a little bit of love and figure out a way for them to help in an organized fashion next time. You know, maybe, and unfortunately, people can be part of that. The reason we stepped in is we have a liability insurance policy in the community, and people stand out in the street for a week with no insurance policy and nobody covering them. So we stepped up to do that, but we can't do it by anything. And I just think, you know, we're going and helping you figure out a way. My claim to the person on council, it's happening right now. Um, we'll stay out next. We don't want to actually go out to let us in somewhere.
Maybe myself, chair of the... What it works. So. One more. The comments.
I just want to thank you so much. Key Hospital's Beautiful already does the cleanup, the big cleanup thing every spring. And really, I don't think it's just once a year, it's just... And really, I appreciate the fallout for Key Hospital's Beautiful, but there were so many other people. I mean, it really was an issue, just a village kind of thing. And nobody was there really for, you know, anything other than just to make it seem nice. And they did a wonderful job, you know, and it does, we do need to push the businesses to take care of their little piece of the pie. If everyone takes care of their little piece of the pie or their little stamp, we don't, won't have this issue. But we have vacant buildings. And I just think everyone, kind of held hostage with looming road project that's never going to hap... Doesn't seem like it's ever going to happen. So, you know, you know, the pods were put to bed last year, and so they really didn't have any sponsors this year because they were supposed to be torn out. So, you know, there was all those things that kind of snowballed. And it's just really wonderful that the community put this on and took care of their town. Thank you so much.
Sarah? I do have some comments. I appreciate everything you've shared with us tonight, and there's only one thing you're... Point you on, and I'll share that to the general. You talked about social media. And it's disacquainted what has happened to social media and what it turns some people into. I regret it. It's the reality of the world that we live in today. I personally, as mayor, tried to engage in it and found out that it doesn't work. When there's all those negative comments out there, they're not looking for a reason behind what they're frustrated for. They're simply looking for disagreement, what they're upset about. So I stopped looking at social media. It doesn't serve a particular purpose. So long outlines. I try to reserve my public comments for my mayor's report at the end of each council. I'm 67. I often forget what I did this morning. But I have a recollection that I did thank all the volunteers that were out today in my mayor's name, in my mayor's report. Because I did, I truly apologize for that. That was never my intent. I try to recognize these kinds of things. That's one thing I disagree with. I do believe that in my mayor's report, I did thank you, all the volunteers that were there, because it wasn't on social media, it might not have been seen as much as it would have otherwise, if people aren't watching the council meetings. Twenty volunteers, one of the mobility chair, that's huge. Hundred and forty of the $200, that's tremendous. I agree with everything you said as far as the condition of the city. And what I want to say to the public is, what I'm going to give you right now is a reason. It's not an excuse. There's a reason that the city looks the way that it does right now, and that's because we are truly short-staffed. Typically, we have part-time, gives a higher office in the summer. That didn't happen this year. So when we look at all the other projects that need to be done, we have a drainage project up on Valley View because people's yards need flooded, but it isn't the right terrain. I could go on and on and on. We simply don't have enough people. Every region done, a few citizens deserve half done, so we have to prioritize that. And we'll look at the city. And at the bottom of the list, it's regrettable. I'll take responsibility for that, but there is a reason why that's happened. Through Public Works, we have recognized that we need to stop identifying a problem and then simply expect that the city crews will pick up the work. They have enough to do now, but they're not getting done. So we need to stop doing that to them. So what we started doing, there was a frustration with some folks in town about the crossmarks not being marked as soon as they normally would have been. Again, that was simply a bad power of problem. So we contracted it out. We spent the additional money to have somebody come in to take care of it. The mark ends up by the stool. Same thing. We didn't have the staff to get it done, so we contracted it. The mark ends up by the stool. Same thing. We didn't have the staff to get it done, so we contracted that out. But we're doing what we can to try to get the things taken care of. But we're not going to be on top of all of us who like to be. So again, to the public, those are reasons. Those are not excuses. And we'll be as open and honest with you as we can. I hope that answers some of your questions. Thank you. Anybody else from public?
Councilwoman Mary, my son, 5:49. I would just like to say thank you for issuing a statement by the Church. Key Possums is a church that I've heard before. We all love the language.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? All right. In motion to go to executive session.
I have something to...
Say again.
I have something for the public.
Oh, great. Karen?
The city has received notice for raffle requests from Empower Coalition of the Southern Hills Incorporated Toys for Kids. On September 17th, 2021, 4:00 p.m., and September 18th, 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. At American Legion 104, James Abbott Hot Springs. Tickets are 50/50, raffle tickets are out of reach, $6 for $5. We're automatically for $20. Proceeds will be used for Empower Coalition of the Southern Hills Incorporated.
Thank you. There isn't any action the council can take. It's just a notification that you're selling raffle tickets.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so I've been told that sometimes we do things up here, and we know what's going on, but the public doesn't. It's not an advertisement for this organization, but by state law, the council is required to receive public notification anytime that takes place. So that's what Karen just did for us, and so for the public's benefit, that's what we're doing.
Motion for executive session?
I'll make the motion to go into executive session per stat of the codified law 1-25-21 for personnel.
Second. Discussion? Call on favor.
I oppose.
Motion passes, and council, if you could just hang on for a moment. Executive session, by codified law, there's specific reasons that the council can go into executive session. And we have to state what those are, and when we're in executive session, we can only discuss that item that was in the motion. We like to reserve the executive sessions for after council meeting, so that you folks aren't sitting there waiting on us returning. But because this is what happens to be for personnel, it necessarily needs to be before the personnel items on the agenda. We'll try to keep this as short as we can so that we don't take any more of your time. It's absolutely necessary. But we do have to go into executive session to discuss personnel. Thank you. Carlisle, if you would join us, please.
Mayor.
Councilman.
Executive session will be in the canics.
Yeah, I have trouble getting in my phone. I have trouble getting in my side of the work. Maybe you should talk to yourself. I'm a little one, so I don't know what the door locks. If my neighbors should be watching, they're watching. He'd already put in his port. This is last night. So basically, they have to break them. Dark doors. Type doors. Prox to each other. I didn't see him too. Because I had to shake it, drawn up, to get it to come worse. She treated me. So she said, whatever. And I made a report too. So I talked to her. I was, two blocks, three, two, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
They actually jumped out ahead of us.
Time front. Because they catch. Yeah, for two. Try to stop. If not, I'll do it on my day off on Thursday. From the owners and to businesses besides. I had to let them know that I was wanting their side of the bill. I said, I don't want that. You know, right? So I didn't get in to time frame. Really? I worked for it. See, you have songs. Because I thought that people that work, they were very old. No, yes. I know, but I didn't recognize them that day. I said, I just started on there. Now, I ordered both, but then I got away from it. We're not part of that. But we're joining in to get our place myself. I survived all this going recognition, you know? And I think I'm really part of that to prove that the law. Just wanted to let us know.
The next one.
But you know, absolutely.
All right, Karen, looks like we returned from executive session at 7:47. All council members except J.R. Huddleston were present in executive session, and city attorney was also there. Want to go ahead and get J.R. back on the phone with us? Hello, sir. We have the Personal Action Corporation to take long, and then the First Reading of the 2022 Corporation for City Law Studies. All right, thank you. All right, the motion to approve personnel actions A through M. And if you remember, Decoy of Zimago is the first employee to pay, and all the rest of them jumped out the alphabet. So they just go with the personnel action, personnel item M. So they have motion to approve personnel items A through M. Make motion to approve items A through M with personnel. Is there any discussion? Call on favor.
I oppose.
Motion passed. So that takes us to our first ordinance item, ordinance item A, first reading of ordinance 1234. I'll make motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1234, the 2022 appropriations ordinance. Discussion? So for the public, this is the first reading of the budgets that the council worked on for 2022. Initially, we planned on having two meetings, and that ran to four meetings to arrive at that budget. Very spirited conversation. I appreciate all of the inputs from all the council members. I appreciate all the inputs from all the council members and their concerns on the two thousand twenty-two budget. So we're ready for the first. Reading of the two thousand twenty-two ordinance. Karen, would you call a roll, please?
David Burris?
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston?
Yes.
Jennifer Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Mullie?
Yes.
Agent Turner?
Yes.
Nick Parker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Official approval actually takes two readings, so the next council meeting will have the second reading. The council at that time still votes this. And we'll have an official budget for two thousand twenty-two. J.R., would you like to say or did you go? Thank you for spending time with us. Everyone's wishes are easy. All right, that takes us to. Our first resolution. Resolution A. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eighteen. A resolution accepting Tom and Ann McCollie Vision Fund.
Make a motion to approve. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, a resolution accepting Tom and Ann McCollie Vision Fund. Established with the South Dakota Community Foundation for the benefit of the city of Hot Springs.
Say it again. All right, normally we don't read full resolutions. This one is a terribly long. It's an exciting and important resolution. It spent three years in the making. It started with previous Mayor Cotty. And spent through a number of discussions. So I just want to read the resolution so everybody knows what this is about. A resolution accepting the Tom and Ann McCollie Vision Fund. Established with the South Dakota Community Foundation for the benefit of the city of Hot Springs. Whereas, Tom and Ann McCollie, longtime residents of Hot Springs. Wish to give back to the Hot Springs community by creating a vision fund to support activities and projects. That would not currently receive financial support from the city of Hot Springs. And whereas, the council wishes to authorize the city finance officer. To establish restricted revenue, expense, and equity cash accounts. And existing five oh one Hot Springs capital improvement fund. Named Tom and Ann McCollie Vision. The sole purpose of administering the funds available for redistribution. And whereas, monies made available from this vision fund. Will not replace the subsequent tax revenues that would be expended through the normal regular city budget. And whereas, each year, the distributable amount of the fund is determined by the South Dakota Community Foundation. Distributable amounts are based on year-end information. And uses a calculation based on sixteen rolling quarters of the fund's fair market value. Four point five percent of that available, of that funds available for distribution. And whereas, the grant making committee will make project requests in Hot Springs Council for distribution by funds. By March thirty-one of the current calendar year. And whereas, one of the goals of the fund is to attract additional donations to allow for growth and availability of future funding. And whereas, the initial grant making committee will be established with the following members. Who will serve on the committee until replaced or removed. The family doesn't mean. Is James Farrell to interview with us?
Yes.
Economic Development Director Andrew Powers. Andrew, thank you. Chamber of Commerce Director Olivia Miras. Olivia regretted that she had to leave. City Council member John Hudson. And our community members, our Kim Weyer. Jennifer Cruz. Jennifer, you with us?
Thank you.
And Dustin Claxton. Now therefore, be resolved by the Hot Springs City Council. To accept the terms of Tom and Ann McCollie Vision Fund. And authorize the establishment of restricted accounts within the city. To account for the revenue, expense, and equity cash. In honor of Tom and Ann's longtime contributions to the city of Hot Springs. So this is exciting. The folks that I reached out to, the department, the grant making committee. When I looked at the Vision Fund. I didn't think we needed another committee of sixty-five plus folks to figure out what the vision of Hot Springs is. We have a whole new generation coming up. Let's take a look at what they want, their future community. So I want to personally thank all of these folks. Didn't have to twist anybody's arms, they were anxious to do this. I'm excited about this happening and want to again personally thank Tom. And Fan, who's passed away. But anyone that's a longtime resident of Hot Springs knows about Tom and Ann McCollie. So we have a new motion. I managed to confuse myself here. All right, we got the motion accepted. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. So thank you, committee members. And we'll sit down and talk and see what the next steps are here. And visions matter of you folks figuring out how you want to advertise that you'll be accepting grant requests. And figure out which ones you want to distribute to by March the first of next year. Thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it. Resolution, item B, two thousand twenty-one dash nineteen, amend the citywide theme resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Amend citywide theme resolution to adjust the airport fuel prices.
Say it again. Discussion? No, would you give us a little heads of ones?
Sure. My information. The last load of fuel that we bought at the airport cost us four dollars and twenty-nine cents a gallon. They're currently selling fuel at four dollars and ninety-five cents a gallon. As of the second of September, we did a survey of airports within a sixty-five mile radius. The average price for self-service hundred adopted aviation fuel is five dollars and eighteen cents a gallon. The mean price is four dollars, five dollars and twenty-four cents a gallon. So based on increased wholesale price and. The increased retail price area, it's proving that new grades are. Stay with me. Discuss to the planes that the airport advisor moved immediately. On the second of September. Some thoughts that he can get under five dollars and twenty cents a gallon, does that sound better? But given that we've already sold probably two thousand gallons of our last eight thousand gallon load that we paid for twenty-nine. We have a fly-in. That will be taking place at the airport this week, starting Thursday, ending on Sunday. We'll have about seventy planes registered and this price increase will take effect on Monday after that ends. So we'll potentially be selling over half that load at four ninety-five gallons, so in order to. Sell as much revenue from this load as possible. Five dollars and twenty-one cents is the appropriate price for. The good news is. When we check wholesale prices. Currently, it's back down to four oh four gallons, so. Don't know whether it'll be when we go to buy the next eight thousand gallon tanker over there, at least it looks like it might come. Recommendations for five, five twenty-one. It does. I've struggled with that for several days.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Resolution C, two thousand twenty-one dash twenty, a first resolution, amending resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty. First resolution, amending resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen A. Resolution vacating a portion of the right-of-way north and east of the intersection of Highway three eighty-five. And that allowed that thing for the purpose of restricted new dollar general retail store facility on that property.
Say it again. Discussion. So this is cleaning up resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventeen, or the legal description. Garland needed to be. Presated and clear. That the one that was in that particular resolution, that's. So that's what this one is doing.
Correct. It's, it's, they, they break his legal. Legal description. Just correct that. Because it's not admitting anything else, just. I call it a scripter there.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
This is item A, possible motion discussion to approve the five-year water service agreement.
Make a motion to approve the five-year water service agreement between the city of Hot Springs and all their water users. Just effective one month.
Say it again. Discussion? Public Works has been working on this contract. For over a year. However, water users approached the city. About renewing the contract before its current expiration, it currently expires in August of two thousand twenty-two. They wanted to have something locked in before then, so they knew whether to come home to the city for water or they needed to go out and drill a well. So they went through contracts. Significant changes to us are. The district on page three. The district provided two, 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 five eight inch meters. For the city of Hot Springs, the first one, the city will pay meter fee on the second, we will not pay a meter fee. City will get up to ten thousand gallons of water per month of charge. After that, we'll pay a rate of seventy-five percent of the standard rate for city quantities. These significant other changes. Friend? Did it change the meter size? Which price? Seventy-five percent? That's on page two. Four one A. District prepared rate of seventy-five percent of standard rates for quantities. Let's see. Questions? If that's not part of this contract. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
This is item A, possible motion discussion of award contract, immediate construction. Make a motion with award contract, immediate construction. For twenty twenty-one Martin Street, water improvement project. You're on a hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars or something.
Discussion?
I think it was fairly obvious from the information in our packets that the communications to all the affected residents have been passed off. Two or three. Registered mail receipts, so it appears that those communications did go out. The letters stated that if there were any concerns, that they should come to find City Hall. Safe to assume that. Were any concerns transferred to City Hall.
Number nine, where it's Tracy. And I asked Tracy, after his simple letter, to go ahead and reach out to him personally, let him know. That if he did have any concerns, that they should be at the meeting tonight to let the council know their concerns and say they want to go forward. So for the public's information, Martin Street is north of town, almost out of city limits. There was a particular property owner that wanted to build, since it builds out there. And they were going to drill a well and put in a setting system. And we talked about this, Public Works. And we all agreed that when it comes to setting systems, that's not something that we should continue allowing within city limits, unless absolutely necessary. We just, we want to stop doing it. We want to have setting systems going in where we can provide a sewer system to the folks that are building. So that's what started all of this and it went from a sewer line to a water line also. And the. As Bill had said, the information of the public's packets and council packet is the cost associated with putting in that sewer water assessment district. But yes, the letters did go out. Tracy talked with them personally. The certified letters, let's see if it will all get returned. Is there anybody? To thank the water assessment, water assessment president that would like to say something? All right. Any other questions from council? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Tracy, if you could contact with contractor, help them get going? Thank you. New business, item C, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor's assignment of this program treasury coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund board.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor's assignment of this department. Treasury on coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund board. Associate insurance compliance with the title. On the Civil Rights Act of the United States.
Discussion? Well, this is very early stages of qualifying for these particular funds. The paperwork that we got notifies the city what our responsibilities are and what information we have to provide, so this is the first step and getting that started. Federal government loves their people. Any other questions? All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion discussion to authorize the agreement between owner and contractor and the notice to proceed to High Country Erectors.
Make a motion to authorize the agreement between owner and contractor and notice to proceed to High Country Erectors dated September eighth, two thousand twenty-one, for construction of the ten unit key hanger building and site development. AIP number three dash forty-six dash zero zero two two dash zero one five dash zero two zero two one seven.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Tracy, would you let him know? Thank you. Next one is new business item E, possible motion discussion to approve a change order.
Make a motion to approve change order number one on the High Country Erectors' construction contract for the multi-aircraft hanger building and site development, reducing the total contract amount by sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Change the hanger doors from hydraulic to bi-fold due to building supplier warranty issues. New contract amount after change is seven hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. AIP number three dash forty-six dash zero zero two two dash zero one five dash two zero two one seven.
Discussion. This is the first change order I've ever seen with the city. And the reduction was partly in price because, as stated in motion, the hydraulic door, manufacturer without warrants in their building with the hydraulic door, so they have to go to a bi-fold door. I request everybody that did their report advisory, and they were on board with bi-fold door and they want a new hanger. And yes, the reduction is significant. The city is not paying seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the tenured key hanger. By the time the state is done, they'll hopefully remember what our share is. It's either seven thousand dollars or ninety thousand dollars. We get quite a building for not a lot of tax. Any other questions? All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item F, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor's assignment to US Department of Interior, US Geological Survey.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor's assignment to US Department of Interior, US Geological Survey joint funding event for the Toronto Water Science Center of Water Resources Investigations Project for the operation maintenance of zero six four zero two zero zero zero, however, at hot stage during the fifth, October first, twenty-one through September third, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of four thousand four hundred and two pounds.
Second. Discussion. This is a law with a motion, Tracy, can you put it in people's terms? Yes. Okay, if we could have it come up to Michael, please.
This is for the continued operation of the gauging stations for Fall River that is located just south of the University Avenue Bridge. The gauging, gauging station has been there since the late nineteen thirties. It is the verifiable and official record of all the flow that Fall River has through hot springs. It also actually does record precipitation, but its primary purpose is for flow recording, and that is available. That is a public site, the USGS website has all of the flow gauging stations around the country that are accessible, so that is public information. It plays a very important role in how the flood insurance rate maps, all of those types of things. FEMA gathers a lot of information for that, so it's, it's a valuable investment that we share, and we do not want to lose that. Anything else?
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion, discussion to schedule a joint public hearing.
Make a motion to schedule a joint public hearing with fighting committee on September twentieth at seven ten P M. to discuss proposed ordinance twelve thirty-five and ordinance amending Title fifteen, Miami U six, Chapter one fifty-five zoning code. Note, the content involves local regulations of medical marijuana-related facilities.
Second. Discussion. So this joint hearing is required by the state so that we can, as a community, get our ordinances in line for medical marijuana. Bill, you're the supplemental matter expert on this, or anything else you know?
Yeah, the hearing, and that's from the research that, yes. The hearing will be for the zoning change. We have two ordinances that we will be working on. One is a licensing ordinance. The other is the zoning ordinance. This hearing will be for the zoning ordinance only.
All right. Any questions from the council? This is a big, any questions from the public? All right. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item F, possible motion discussion to accept thirty thousand gallon propane pre-buy.
Make a motion to accept thirty thousand gallons of propane pre-buy, quote, approved twenty twenty-one dash twenty from two contract agreement from ending propane at one dollars cents per gallon.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item I, possible motion discussion to approve contract change order number one on the environmental systems contracts.
Make a motion to approve contract change order number one on the environmental systems and property. Contract that the hot springs wastewater treatment facility digest and cover replacing the project. Contract amount increases by nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for a total of one hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. And contract period increases three months to thirty-one of twenty-two.
Second. Discussion. Tracy? Tracy's provided an explanation of why this change order is necessary. So anything else you'd like to add, or does council have any questions for it? And this particular item has been identified by D N R. I believe they have a good name now, D N R or somebody, but they have cited it in their inspections as a deficiency of the user address.
This increase, change, we had three bids for this, right? So were they still the best bid with the change?
Michael, please.
Even with this change, it's still less than the others, but of course, it's a change in scope, so it, you really couldn't consider the evidence to be valid, because they would have to, in turn, change the scope of what they're doing. In, in a simple sense, we were hoping to put a different type of cover over this structure, different than the original one. The original one had had some issues, and of course, it was worn out. Most wastewater plants have a life expectancy of about twenty years for most of the major components, and our plant is actually thirty-seven years old, so, you know, time has come that some of these major components have to be replaced. Through discussing with the former administrator, John Gregory, we had looked at going to what's called a fixed cover, and that is a less expensive cover, but it also requires changes in the plumbing system and the operational system, and those changes would be more expensive than actually going with the same type of cover system that we had before. So that's, after quite a big discussion, we decided that we'd ask to go ahead and go with the original type of cover, so that's what the change is for.
Tracy, this will be a floating, will there be a weather cover over this, or will it be open to the atmosphere?
This is actually the weather cover. I mean, it's, floating covers are painted epoxy-type paint on them. The secondary clar, secondary digister has a floating cover, but it is held up just fine.
And is there a dual seals system or just a single seal system?
I would have to double check on that as far as how it's sealed, but it certainly will be an improvement over the original in thirty-five, forty years' time. Because I asked him quite a few times, are we going to have the same problems with that as the other type one? Because John had some previous experience too with the floating covers getting off their tracks, but they have made a lot of improvements, but that's, we would actually spend more money trying to change it to go to a fixed cover, so this is still our most technical approach.
Thanks. Any other questions? All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item J, possible motion discussion to approve a temporary alcohol beverage license.
I make a motion to approve a temporary alcohol beverage license application from C S A, doing business as Water Circle for the Music in the Park event on September fourth, twenty-one at September five.
Before we get into discussion, the question is, that why are we approving an alcoholic beverage license that's part of a year's, it was last week? The reason behind it is that Winter Circle throughout the year requests a lot of these temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, and they took it, they spent all of them at the first of the year, and then they come from the council as were ready to approve them. Last week, Winter Circle came in and said, whoops, we recognize we didn't get that one in front of you, but the event is coming up. So in talking with the finance officer, these folks, again, have their team done this, these types of liquor license, temporary liquor licenses in the same location, we know who they are, we know how they manage these, and I went ahead and said, yes, go ahead, if I'm allowed to have the event, and we will get in front of council. And talking with, this is talking with the state, the state is perfectly fine with it. The state doesn't oversee these, they didn't open the city to do it. So it's not like we're trying to cover anything, or somebody's trying to slip something by us. This was an honest oversight on their part. I've never met anybody that's a hundred percent right a hundred percent of the time. They stepped up and let us know that they didn't get it done. So for me, in my mind, or have they gotten into some time, would you have voted just for it then? Is that a consideration for voting just for it after? Oh, discussion.
Who are you responsible? To be like.
Any other comments? All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item K, possible motion discussion to approve acknowledged decline hot springs event and routes.
Make a motion to approve acknowledged decline hot springs event and route scheduled for September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, approval meeting for D O T coming.
Second. Discussion. Sure. See, Mike is out with us right now, and he mentioned that the stairs by the Episcopal Church, you know, the city got that with word of mouth. Are you satisfied that these stairs will be usable for this event, or? Okay. All right. Good. Looking at the information that's provided to the council, says we'll need to modify the routes due to incomplete stairway area. If I don't correct that, and it will be part of the annual event, good. Any other questions?
We need up for five stair patients, right? We have five stair patients.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. New business item L, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
Make a motion to approve travel training request through C D coordinator, George Rodd, to attend twenty twenty-one South Hill, Detroit, Detroit, Rick and Steve Constance, in here South Hill, November third and before.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. And our last new business item, this family, is for a special moment, and has to do with the youth council. Last year, when COVID hit, and I was doing some research, how other councils were managing COVID-related activities, what ordinances they might be put in place, steps they were putting in place. I was looking through a number of the websites for other cities, and I don't know what I typed into Rapid Cities website, but what popped up was a Rapid City Youth Council. And looking at it, I was immediately intrigued and excited about it. Rapid City has a youth council that essentially does the same thing that their city council does. They have members, they have six schools up there, and they selected three kids from each school, so their youth council has eighteen members on it, representing six different schools up there. So over the last year, I've been looking at how we might do that here in Hot Springs. And the thought that came to mind is, if we can duplicate the same number of members that are sitting up here for the youth council. They elect their own chair and co-chair, they meet monthly, they have one of their members that actually attends our council meetings, so they can see what is interesting to us, they're interested to us. They take that back to their, their youth council. If there's topics that they want to research, that they want to respond to the council that we're considering, they would do that. Medical marijuana might be an issue, or they would sit down, assist the council, and identify. Marijuana might be an issue where they would sit down, assist the council, identify the things that are important to them for their community. And I'm just excited about the opportunity to do that, to put something like that in place. I spoke with the high school principal, he's completely on board with doing. Council, with council actually has their own bylaws. They have an application process they go through to explain why they would like to be on the youth council. So my hope is that have something in place around the first of October to begin getting this thing kicked off. Council Pratt has agreed to be council representative for the youth council. I'd like to try this on, I'm excited about it, and I think it would be a good thing. Do everything we can to make it work. While the events are up there, I'll be right back in front of you with a resolution to actually establish the youth council. Any questions, comments? We can talk about meetings. We actually do set up our own committees for things that they want to try, if there's something that's interesting. And then bring their suggestions to the council. All right. So it takes us to our committee reports. Evan Finance, give it.
Evan Finance met today at one o'clock at the New York Civic Center. President for myself, Bill, Jen, and Misty. In old business, we talked about the residential tax rebate discussion as we talked about last. We have certified letters already sent out. The deadline making that was October fifteenth to get back to us, which we, the city, the treasurer, and the equalization officer of the county. We're working at form for those eligible so they can come in. Probably done by the end of this month, they can come in and receive their rebate soon. In new business, we reviewed monthly finance officer reports and discussed the twenty-two to the budget highlights and shortages. We also reviewed potential changes in personnel policy to address smoking and alcohol marijuana using guidance from the S N P A. So that's something we'll be addressing at the council meeting, which we'll go on. And last year, we did an emergency garbage service R F B, which is coming up soon. So we'll be having that advertised soon on a motion to go out for the R F B and a future as well. Our next Evan Finance meeting is October fourth at nine P M at the New York Civic Center.
Any questions, Taylor? Thank you, Taylor. Airport advisory, Bill?
Hey, airport advisory met Thursday, September second, eight A M at the airport. Present from the membership was Larry Vetterman, Matt Jensen, Don Connor, and Patrick Wilson. City employees present were Bruce, Rick, Rick Topp, Tracy Bastian, Scott Soke, elected officials from Mayor Nelson and myself. Guest with Charlie Baker from K L J Engineering. Under old business, Larry Vetterman provided an update on the fly-in. As I said earlier, that fly-in will start this Thursday, September ninth and go through Sunday, September twelfth. They expect about seventy aircraft that have been registered. As far as impact on the community, at least one of the motels is booked full from the registries. A lot of the other folks will be camping under their aircraft out at the airport. And what these folks do is they will gather up and take air tours of various areas in the area. And then when they come back, that's when you get a chance to celebrate aviation. Last year was the first one of those that I was aware of that we had in the area. We had over fifty pilots. And it was a big deal because one of the biggest fly-ins in the nations in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, because of COVID, the chance of the past year. What's interesting is they had the Oshkosh Fly-In this year. And we've already got seventy registered pilots for our fly-in. So this, just like the Balloon Festival grew this year, our fly-in is growing also. So there's many things that Hot Springs is, is growing. There's a lot of folks interested in what we have to offer. Under new business, I do not, because of unit problems, I don't have flight operations and fuel sales for you. Balloon operations, we had sixty-one takeoffs and twelve landings. We get lessons learned on the Balloon Festival. Things went really well this year. The parking went well. We've had good comments from participants and attendees. There was good coordination from the team. There's probably some improvement that could have been achieved regarding Highway seventy-nine and traffic management. However, since this year was a change from previous years, as we had signs out there, it makes things different. We expect next year to go even better. Already talked about fuel price changes. As I said, Charlie Baker was from K L J was with us. He was there to conduct an annual review of the airport capital improvement plan. We've got a long list of potential work items on our capital improvement plan, but really only two items. There are a lot of that have dates associated with it. One is the ten-year teehanger project. They'll finish up in twenty-twenty-two. And our next project will be the A W O S three, which is airport data observation system, which we hope to be able to install hopefully with hundred percent funded money in twenty-twenty-four. Reason this is important to us is not only will some of the local TV stations maybe recognize that Hot Springs exists and you actually have weather here. Sorry for the editorial comment. But any aircraft that is required, that uses instrument flight rules or has to have facilities for I F R landings can then utilize our airport. So if the governor decides they want to come down to Hot Springs instead of flying into Rapid and driving down, they can fly directly into Hot Springs. If an air ambulance needs to come in and weather's bad, we've got A W O S three, they can still land under I F R rules. So it opens up a whole new, if you will, clientele for our airport. So that will help us grow. The Glider Club has sent word through one of the members, Patrick Wilson, that they had some concerns over hot holes under the hangar. Our manager said that he would be rolling the runway just as soon as there's enough moisture in the ground to be able to roll one runway. It's benefits of that activity. Airport truck does need some repair work. Our new fleet mechanic is working to accomplish those repairs. Airport manager is assessing the budget to make sure there's funds available to do that. Also, in a subsequent discussion after the meeting, it was determined that a two-lane radio should be installed in the airport pickup to ensure that there's a way to communicate with incoming aircraft in the event that there's issues with the heavy bell radio in that jurisdiction and location, to make sure that there's the funds. If we do that, that spending should be about three million dollars. Meeting adjourned at nine A M and next meeting at eight thirteen, October seventh, eight A M, nine P M.
Any questions for that? I have one. You didn't mention that there were sixty-one takeoffs and twelve landings. Does that suggest we still have forty-nine balloons in the air?
No, whereas it's very important for a fixed wing aircraft to have a takeoff and a landing. A balloon can build up, but where it comes down is totally wind dependent. So they came down, but not necessarily at the airport.
Thank you. Custer, caller, original voice management, Larry?
Next meeting will be this Thursday, seventeenth, March nineteenth.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
We met last Wednesday, September first. Meeting was called to order at five P M through the Miller Center. Present were Joe Mullers, Scott Soke, Steve Leenya, Kara Dinkin, Gerald Coligan, Brian Powers, Pat Like, and Mike Summer. Guest present were Dwayne Whitney, owner of the building at one twelve North Chicago, and Citizen Luke Royals. Minutes were read approved. Scott, under old business, Scott is working with our city attorney to drop the letter to present to the judge the rule against entering the Fowler Building, which is the building to the right of City Hall. He also has new photos of the rear of the property at the Penny Building. That's the one just adjacent to the Ace Hardware on the corner. There's quite a bit of accumulation, ten P M. We now have complete copies of the ordinance provisions. We're going to have to deal with them, which will be read over by the commission members and will be discussed at the October meeting. Steve met with the property and their project engineer for the highway project. As we've discussed prior, several existing signs and awnings are out of spec according to the new numbers presented by the D O T. These will not be required to come into spec unless there is a change of signage or new awnings. Parking will remain diagonal on the business side with parallel on the riverside of North River Street. New business, Brian Powers submitted his resignation. We now have another opening, open seat on the commission field. So I believe we have now another opening. So we'd really like interested community members to be invited to discuss contacts that we have and our mayor. There was discussion on adopting the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. H P C would use these as recommendations to aid in preservation and restoration of historic properties. Adopting these on a project will be favorable when applying for any grants as they are regarded as the standard. There was a motion by Joe to adopt and seconded by Pat, and the motion passed. There was a certificate of appropriateness presented to Scott after he taped it to the front door of the owners of the Two House Primery. They are painting the exterior of their building at two thirty-seven North River Street. Regarding the certificate, regarding color choices, Steve picked up a colored chip selection from Ace Hardware showing their line of historical colors. Steve has also spoken to the folks at Sherwin-Williams in Rapid City. It was informed he may stop in time to pick up their chip selection. While the commission does not have the authority to dictate color choices, we will recommend if he wanted to blend with adjacent structures using the chip selections or others. We discussed the signage typically being the item that stands out to draw people into the business. The motion was initiated for Two Houses to continue with their color choice by Pat and by Pat and seconded by Kara and passed. C N A was presented by the owners of Willie Jack's to replace windows, repair E walls, and replace cedar siding on the street side of the building now one thirty-eight South Chicago. Motion made by Brian to proceed with repairs, seconded by Pat and Kara. Discussion items, Dwayne Whitney from Custer was present to learn about the process involved in moving forward with making changes to the building he purchased at one twelve North Chicago. He left with some printed information and several questions answered. Luke Royals from Save Our Sandstone Inc. brought commission up to speed on the results of the last meeting. Fundraising and moving forward with a new website for the Q R code project were discussed. Bobby Ladner from P R Marketing Group was present to give options for a website. Meeting was adjourned at six P M and they will meet again Wednesday, October sixth, five P M near the Miller Center.
Any questions for Deborah? It's you providing.
Well, they do have guidelines, but apparently grandfathering is allowed unless they make significant changes.
Couple things to follow up with on Deborah's report. Garland, without getting into any details, it's my understanding that you and Scott met today regarding access to the Fowler Crumford Building?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that going okay? Do you think you'll be able to get something in front of the judge that will grant the city the authority to get into that building?
Not getting into, we're just moving forward. We're taking all the necessary steps.
Okay. Any idea what you think? How it would be at the end of getting something in front of the judge or?
It'll be in a few weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then Deborah had mentioned that the Historic Preservation Committee has room for some members. Anybody that's interested in being on that committee, I would ask you to go to the city's websites and take a look at our ordinances, specifically the Historic Preservation. And there are some qualifications, experiences that is talked about there. And for being on the commission, I'll take a look at those and to feel that brings some value to the committee. The commission, as Deborah said, submit your names to me. We'll go from there. Evans Plunge Advisory, listen.
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will be meeting this Thursday, September ninth, at Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry?
Meeting started at three P M. Eight people were in attendance. There's an update on the dog park. Additive gave an update. The price has gone up on the fencing material. But it could be a little file out before the actual fences start to go up, the material together. An individual that volunteered to put fence up for free, what I understand, Adam was saying to me, so that's one good thing. I will need your help on the next one there. New business discussions on putting up flags on holidays. And I want to kind of go off the deal here, throw it out there. My idea with that is in the Native American way, that dances, the flags are taken out, they're hatched around and the veterans will take those flags down to their families. And I got to thinking, we have the Freedom Trail with all these lights that are down there. And we've got so many veteran families in town that have family flags, family members that have passed on or served in the military. My thought was to take these flags on holidays, Veterans Day, Fourth of July, post those colors along with a little plaque, tells of the service, a person's service. You know, a little story about it, if you will. And the responsibility would be to the families, I don't know how it was, it's still in discussion, but how they would bring them down in the morning time, place the flags, place the colors out. At the end of the day, there's family's responsibility to take those flags down at the evening or night. And then if we're doing this, like maybe we've got an event for two or three days, come back again, post those colors again and keep going that direction. It is a veterans town. You know, the taxpayers to me are paying for the Freedom Trail. And in my heart, in my heart, nobody else knows before the council, you know, I don't believe one- I don't believe one person or a group should have the responsibility to say, hey, we're not going to do the same work. I think we as a town can jump up and, and do this. So that's my thoughts and my vision. Um, so we are a veterans town. So that's what I'm reading exactly. All right, I'm back on, on board here. All right, Lori has the cemetery update. I thank you to all volunteers helping out looking for an appropriate size. She's looking for an appropriate size bowl for the cemetery. Once she gets that, she'll serve custom decent bowlers, lots of them acquired. The Iraq Department Hydro Party was a success. Assistant Kathy Pass is training himself to speed. Last activity, I believe, is music and movement scheduled in 20 September through October 25th. I believe those are going to be all but made, um, funny. Um, you want to know, contact Kathy for details. And I think the sign up sheets are down at the City Hall. The tennis courts are in Vegas. They need to have the cracks filled as tennis court that's scaled for the park. Let's see. Public comments, discussion on memorial for a person to be placed, for a memorial to be placed at the top of the park. Uh, discussion on all parks need trees trimmed. Um, the water fountain is a big discussion right now. We decided as, as a committee to move the meetings back to 1:00 PM. Uh, the meeting was adjourned at 4:45 PM. Next meeting will be October 6th at 3:00 PM at Mueller Center.
At 1:00 PM, right?
Is that?
1:00 PM.
Just my memory. Yep, thank you.
Any questions for Larry?
I have one. Front flag means the small pool. Problem is, once we get all the new lights in town, we then replace the small pool, the large ones, right?
And talk about the light poles. Uh, so to the light poles that, um, Larry and Craig are talking about, the recent vandalism to the American flags on all, all our lights, I think is what they refer to. The American agent writers, uh, were the folks that had put up those American flags all along the Freedom Trail. Very recently, there was some vandalism to them. So the folks that were responsible for the flags have taken them down. Now it's a matter of what we've got to do with, um, the lights. As Craig had mentioned, the, the intent, uh, of the city is the streetlights that come down along Main Street will replace the short taller lights, uh, that are on the Freedom Trail. Uh, I believe a number of, uh, little lights have been replaced with the big ones previously. So it looks like they just, um, take them down and put the other one up. It will be easy to do that. Um, with the taller lights, the flags will be higher, so there's less chance of vandalism. As I understand Larry's point, uh, offering the, the lights themselves to individual families to, to honor their loved ones. We talked about this, looking into how many light poles are available to do that. Uh, and then deciding how many people would be interested in doing that and sign them in particular light pole for their family. If we exceed the number of poles, um, by the interest of parties, then we'd rather try and figure out how that's, that's managed. We are looking at, uh, what we need to do to get, um, flags back up on those poles. Um, it may not happen until after the road reconstruction project and we have the lights up. Or it may happen before that. We don't want to rush into it on here tonight, but that's the discussion that we're having in parks is how we're going to do this going forward. Larry had talked about bowlers at the cemetery with the council meeting, the first reading of the budget. There aren't any bowlers, uh, in the cemetery's budget for 2022, so that should take care of itself next year. Thank you, Larry. Planning and zoning. JR was unexpectedly, um, needed to be away. I don't know if we have the report from planning and zoning that, that I might be aware of, if not, just defer that until next council meeting. Public safety. Nope, uh, public safety will meet Monday, September 20th, 10:00 AM here at the Mueller Center. Thank you. Public Works, David Crick.
Last Public Works meeting was September 2nd. They're on hand here at the Mueller Center. Those in, uh, attendance, please, for all recent past due, uh, Wes Bryan, Kurt Drone, Paul Nelson, and myself. In the winter, as far as new business, discussing, let's see, back up the residence at 145 Logan Street. Black and brown education is, um, 110 South 60. And we, uh, discussed, uh, may not be as thorough, so we discussed where a position would be. There's been, there's been snow, rain, hail. These things are, are all becoming a problem in that small area. Device cost, uh, process that for some insurance costs that are being sprayed by solid items, uh, listed on the Royal Short Building. It's planned, it's going to be discussing, uh, process of putting those items, what they are. But, uh, that's, uh, some. What were the relevant details? Special solid asphalt. On the road. It's pretty similar to this in progress. Um, as we discussed, uh, church stairs, this whole church is, uh, pretty much done. I don't think there's any other items left on there. It's probably not. The utilities, as we discussed earlier this evening, is sort of, uh, as far as marks being improved as a result. I'll be looking on that. Solar inspection family, every quarter. This one piece is missing that we're waiting on, if I understood. Still have, right, this is the next building. For the campuses, uh, it's actually a condition. A lot of people getting, but. Um, ENR compliance, uh, this water treatment plant, 2021 supplemental appropriation plans, the house approved. It's also a way from the school. The materials we delivered a contract to be discussed this, uh, this year. We discussed a, a, with, uh, appointments for specialists of, uh, still works. Discuss the point by this meeting, kind of, to make sure. Which one is the top? That's being moved in September 14th, uh, at the Mueller Center. And one thing is, uh, don't forget to catch free doubling is coming September 13th, December 1st. Monday, Thursday, and Friday, 8:00 AM, which is going to be, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday will be 11:00 AM, which is going to be.
Any questions for him?
I have one thing to add. If anybody in the public has any damaged totes, garbage totes, you can hold the city because we're purchasing 200 new ones. So we're, we're out of them, but if anybody has any damage, wants to hold the city.
Thank you, John. Southern Hills Golf Course. At August 19th or August 9th, by the pocket City Hall. Uh, under the approval of the cart path on hole number three, uh, that is yet to be completed this year. They discussed the 2022 budgets that have been intensively approved by a council. They also discussed the clubhouse renovation repairs. I'll have additional comment about that. It's the, uh, rock wall that's underneath the deck on the northwest corner of the clubhouse, uh, is indeed are immediately repaired. The, uh, John Gannon, uh, benefit golf tournament is scheduled for September 25th. It's a nice fundraiser for the golf course. The entry fees are $50 for members and $100 for non-members. Bucks Golf Course, nonprofit group, fans of the golf course. Now, these are all volunteers. They do the best to raise money to, uh, the repairs, uh, on the golf course that just don't fit into the budget. The last repair that they did from the fundraiser they had last year was to replace a, a cart path, hole number 12. That guy. The asphalt had completely failed and these folks raised the money. Went out, uh, with volunteer labor and got the cart path replaced. We're going to have a vacancy of clubhouse manager at the end of the year. Uh, she has indicated that it's time for her to move on into retirement in the next phase of her life. So we're looking at how we want to, uh, fill that position or we want to continue doing it, uh, way that we have for a couple of years or whether they want to look at, uh, handling or moving responsibilities from that position. So that will be a ongoing discussion. At the next meeting of the Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee will be next Monday, September 19th, 5 o'clock at City Hall and hopefully feasible. Uh, takes us to our finance officer report. Karen? Okay. The, uh, the council did get it in your information packets. Uh, it's the standard format that, uh, she provides for everybody. So if you have any questions, uh, so we'll be able tomorrow to answer one of those questions for you. We don't have the city administrator currently, so we don't have the city administrator report. But that comes down to me again. The search for a city administrator is ongoing. I've received two applications for the position, but I'm going to wait until more applications are received before I begin the process of screening candidates. I spoke with a number of community members whose opinions I respect. I asked them to be on the initial screening committee and they've all agreed. Uh, my thought is to have these folks do the initial screening of everyone and find me with a short list of the individuals that they feel meet the job qualifications. From there, interviews will be conducted and final recommendation council to fill the city administrator position. City has received a proposal from Henderson Engineering to address the failing retaining wall adjacent to the clubhouse and the golf course. Say all, uh, convention. Golf course report. This will be an agenda item for the next Public Works Committee to discuss and recommend course of action. The redesigned city website, hs-st.org is now active. The overall design has been updated and navigating the site is much easier. Changes and tweaks are likely to be needed. Those changes will be much easier to accomplish with the new website. And finally, I want to thank everyone who's involved, whether large or small. The Chamber of Commerce Fall River Blue Festival weekend, the 28th. There are too many names to mention without the risk of forgetting someone. Even though the balloons were able to launch on Saturday morning, the event was a huge success. From the activities at Sentinel Park Saturday morning to the night blow at a number of locations throughout the city. Chamber is fully building an event that has the potential to become a major drawing card for visitors to Hot Springs. Questions for me? Now, when I talked with Olivia, she, uh, wants to take September off. And then yes, she'll be back in the planning, uh, for the event next year. Uh, I talked with, um, one of the pilots that's instrumental in putting the event on. My question to them, as far as the, the airport itself is concerned, uh, physically, how many balloons can the airport handle? Uh, their response was they could probably, upwards of 100 balloons out there. Limiting factor is, um, sponsors. They pay for the pilots to come in, uh, which they feel, uh, will pay for the propane for all, there are expenses associated with doing this. Uh, if the sponsorships, um, don't grow, then the number of balloons, uh, aren't able to grow. Anybody that saw the event, if it sees the potential that's there. It needs to be more than a three-day event. It needs to be a long event. We all occurred in South Dakota. It's huge with, uh, the, uh, the benefits there. I had talked with this about. I'm a broker. I heard people have heard this say it, but I think the next two to three years, Hot Springs has huge opportunities in front of us. And shame on us if we don't take it back. Uh, it's being okay with, with being complacent in statement. We need a good direction forward and we've got a lot of folks that are stepping up, willing to help us do that. So as a city, we need to get on board with that. I'm watching your, your discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.